Selecting meeting at six oh three on February twenty sixth, two thousand and twenty four. First up is the presidential primary election warrant. Vote and sign.
I move we accept the scheduling of the mandatory presidential primary election on the fifth day of March from seven AM to eight PM at the Okam Town Hall.
Second.
On favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Page. Was it on the agenda?
I think so.
I think it was on that one.
Be thanked by the constable. The choice of. Is it three? Okay. The tip of my thumb is numb.
Is that money in the budget to replace this ceiling?
It's one of the reasons we're meeting tonight here. By the way, we can see it in the camera. Yep. Lights out. Watch yourself.
Just sign good.
Yep.
I just got your signs. Okay. She needs to fill this one now.
There were two copies.
Use your pen before I clip it because I do things like that even as the police chief's wife.
All right, we have a vote.
Great.
It's February twenty first, two thousand and twenty three to be amended.
I'm going to abstain.
Good night. Good night. Thank you, Tony. Thank you.
With motion.
Right.
Yes, abstain.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of February twenty first as amended.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
Aye. Interim town clerk.
How many days has it been? How many to go?
No, it's been two months on the twentieth. So what's today the sixth? So. But I'm not counting yet.
So how's it going?
Not too bad. Busy as can be, though.
Yeah.
I get frustrated because usually when I call one of like the state, I don't get, they don't get back to me very quickly. And I'd like to get the things done, but otherwise doing fun. I'm having a good time.
Is there anything you need? From us?
Probably sixty dollars and I've got. Well, I'm right now I doing pretty good.
Yeah.
Um, I sent out two hundred and two early voting ballots and probably got maybe half of them back. I want to say I didn't really count, but that's quite a few of them back.
And they have until election day for them to come in?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Five people.
Have you gotten any responses for absentee ballots?
No.
But yeah.
Just the, you know, the early voting ones that took the, you know, vote by mail. Nobody's really took, asked for absentee one. Well, a lot of the people that got them got the early voting anyway, so.
Okay. Well, I know there are some absentee ones that should be coming in. I just want to make sure they get in on time.
Okay.
But they got plenty of time still to go.
Yeah.
Nomination papers have been given out to those wishing to run for office.
Yeah, I've got five, I think was. Five people.
Okay, good.
When do they need to get those back to you?
April.
Of the early voting ones that you've received, would you have an estimate as to how many are requesting all elections?
Yeah. Um, I think so far I only have two that only want to do the, like, actual primaries and the actual things. That's I think so only two, so I don't know.
And so the rest are they requesting access to this early voting all the time?
Yeah.
Because there's these checkboxers. Which ones do you want?
Yeah, same with the absentee ballots. You can do the same thing.
You can be absent every time?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, for a presidential and because they don't have the requirements of being hospitalized.
Right.
On an absentee. Okay.
A lot of them just can't get out too, so.
Homebound. Yeah.
Yeah, they are.
Okay.
My concern with this particular position is that come May, we're either going to have someone run for the position and potentially be seated, and we're also going to have it on the ballot as an appointed position. And right now, I don't know that unless Edna were to apply for one of those other positions going forward, it ends there.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm concerned that what's our plan as we enter March? You know, at one point, I think there was thought of maybe having an assistant clerk. And would an assistant clerk per diem be something to consider? At least that way it's somebody that Edna can train for some of the tasks. So that if there's an interim period where we don't have anybody, they can do something. Otherwise, we're going to be in a real tight spot.
Yeah.
Potentially with no applicants for the no nomination papers.
Right. Nobody's taken out yet.
And nobody that we could potentially appoint if that passes.
You may have to like, you know, go and put out a, you know, ask somebody, you know, let them, somebody apply for the job. Maybe, you know, advertise in the papers and or at least the bearing is that. So people know that it's going to be open. And you can say it's contingent on the vote.
That would be a, it would have to be contingent on the vote, but it would be a good idea to get it out there saying that we are going to be looking for somebody.
Yeah, I mean, or even in the, an alternative could be we're simply looking for a per diem assistant.
Right.
Which could be more.
It could become more, yes.
Yeah, I think we should do that.
Because you, you were just kind of thrown in the middle of dog licenses and absentee and mail-in ballots and.
Senses.
Yeah.
I mean, it all comes at once in the beginning of the year, so it does.
It's a very difficult time.
Yeah. And then you're going to start getting into the deaths, death notices that you have to track.
I got one now. I'm in the works of getting the, he died the twelfth. So I went online with the program that they have and I can't figure out where to print out the death certificate. So I called, I called them and they never called me back, so. And I called about probably around nine thirty this morning and left a message that I'd be there until one thirty. And they never got back. We'll call again tomorrow and do the same thing.
One of the things I've noticed with the Department of Public Health is you're better off emailing them because they keep their own hours and especially where you're only there for a few hours a day.
Yeah.
At least you'd have it in your email, their response.
Yeah, okay.
And when you go on to the Secretary of State's office, it has all the different offices for like elections and.
Right.
And maybe you could email that person if you can figure out.
You know, I did go on the website that the town clerks go on. And there was just a phone number that I could call, so that's what I did.
Yep.
So you want to put something out?
Yeah. So is it, it's either the, is it one or both that we look for an assistant per diem clerk? And or also post for a town clerk position subject to?
I would post them both.
Okay, so I would move.
I would post both of them.
I would move that we post for a assistant town clerk per diem as well as post for the permanent town clerk subject to the vote at the municipal election on May twentieth.
Okay.
Second.
Second. Favor.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Edna.
You're welcome. It's fun. You know, I have a weird sense of humor. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Just be careful of the wire.
Yeah.
All right, highway department, FY twenty five budget. You're up.
Just got to pull up your budget. There are ballots under the municipal budget ones, right?
Yes, and it's not the one that says revise, it's the other one.
A highway XLS. And I got to share that.
It's not Kev.
You want to know?
Go to. Highway superintendent.
Hey. Sorry.
Okay. Is this, is this the one Kevin submitted?
This is the, with the, with the wages level funded.
Okay.
The one that says revised is the one that he then submitted, but wages were level funded.
Okay.
If we could comment from the finance committee on this for just a minute?
Yeah, go ahead.
I know Kevin's going to be very fortunate to retire shortly. I did it not too long ago. It's fun. I think one of the things, I think I shared this at the last meeting, when you look at how you're going to budget for the new highway superintendent, whatever you put in this line is going to become your baseline, Don. You know, if you, I know Kevin put ninety something. I have to look it up again. Highway superintendent is going to, this is public knowledge. Everyone can see it. They're going to say, okay, they're budgeting ninety thousand. I'm going to expect ninety thousand. I just, again, nothing, nothing to do with anything other than I think from a budgetary standpoint, level funding it is the right thing to do.
We put the add out, starting at seventy-three to seventy-six.
Yeah. But I, again, if you put this in the ninety at the town meeting, you haven't hired someone by then. It's, it's public knowledge.
It's not our intention to do ninety.
Okay. I'm just, again, I just wanted to, I didn't remember that came from.
I remember you mentioned that.
I brought that up to you before. It was at one of the other meetings.
No, it's, it's what it is right here for now.
Okay. Just wanted to reiterate that. I think it's significant.
So you want to skip down to the.
Why don't we just discuss the, the increased ones, Kev? Different houses.
All right, thirteen. That's the line, street signs and lines. That's the money we. Line item for. Our street sign post, your line painting. Budget. Ninety-five hundred. And it's just not enough.
Spent seventy-two hundred so far, Kevin. So if we spend one, so you're, or seventy, yes, about a thousand a month you're spending.
Well. Street signs and lines cost me last year. Twelve thousand dollars.
Yep, about a thousand dollars a month.
Well, that's. That's a one shot. I do them once a year. And that chews up most of the budget. You know, I get requested they want signs for this and signs for that. It's all a cost. And with the steel prices, it's just, it's, it's ridiculous. It's crazy. You can't keep up with the cost of the sign posts. A hundred, a hundred and fifty bucks a piece. We used to pay thirty or forty dollars. There's no, there's no price control anymore. People just name the price and you want to, you want to pay it, that's what you're going to pay. So, I mean, I can't. You know, I mean, we do, you know, new roads and I got to restripe them. So that's what the cost, the extra cost is, is a striping. And of course, like everything else, the lineal foot per paint goes up every year. It doesn't stay the same. So. That's the increase on that. On that line item. The uniform cost normally is a three percent increase every year. And I've been. I add shoes into that, one pair of shoes a year, you know, walking through the salt, you know, the water, the wet, salt, it just destroys your shoes, so. And then the summertime overtime. It's five hundred dollars. I mean. I can't, it only allows me twelve and a half hours of overtime. And that's, you know, you have a windstorm come through and knock down a bunch of trees, that, that gets chewed up really quick. At least give me twenty-four hours. That never fails. I go on vacation, every single time I go, well, trees come down, so. Good wall. It's a minimal four hours if they get called out, so. Only a couple tree limbs, trees that come down. You know, if I send one guy, no, they don't like to send one guy, I send two.
How much is that, an hour, Kevin?
Or whatever the, whatever the overtime rate is, like my senior man is, it's forty dollars and fourteen cents an hour, so.
I mean, your total proposed is only a two and a half percent increase, which I think is extremely reasonable. And I'm like, how, how are you doing maintenance on the trucks right now? Who's doing the maintenance?
We do it. Unless it's a major. Last year we had, I don't know, last year, before we had the major engine failure, then we're going to send it out.
Are you, who's the expert in vehicle maintenance? You or one of the other guys?
Harold.
Okay.
We all, we all work together.
I'm just curious, like, when you retire, is that an unmet need that we're somehow going to have to send out more stuff for repair?
No, no. I mean, like I said, we do all, we do it all in-house. Any welding fabrication, we do it all here, the repairs. Tomorrow I got a truck that's going to go to work. I got a broken U-bolt. We can't do that. But, you know. But majority of it, ninety, ninety-five percent of it, we do it in-house.
That saves the town a lot of money.
It, truly it does. We're very fortunate.
Before Harold, it was Pete. Pete, Pete was the mechanic.
Right.
You know, we all do it together. I didn't put in for any equipment. Replacement. I just want to. Whoever the next guy is, let him, whatever his preference is. I could throw some prices at you, but I got some quotes on the trucks. One of the biggest six-wheel dump trucks. Looking at two hundred and eighty-five to three hundred thousand. Replace that truck. And the oldest truck we have out there is a nineteen ninety-six. We have two thousand, two, two oh, two oh fours. The smaller one tons. That truck is. That truck's a hundred and eighteen thousand. And then there's an in-between truck that I went out in Stockbridge and looked at and got, you know, a price. Those are on a hundred and seventy-seven thousand. I go in between a big truck and a small truck.
Now, when we have bought trucks in the past, those are all debt exclusions?
No.
They were budgeted, like annual leases or?
The thing with chapter ninety, you can buy equipment on a chapter.
Chapter ninety, yeah.
We never really, we haven't, we haven't bought much for equipment on a chapter ninety.
Just free cash on that last one.
Okay.
That last dump truck that was supposed to go to Bond and never went to Bond.
A small one.
Yeah. I did free cash on that.
Yeah.
We have Bond now.
No.
I mean, we have Bond, so.
So I didn't, like I said, I didn't. Put in for replacement trucks. I don't, you know, let the next person, whoever. They might have preference of what they want.
Is there a reason why we don't do something like the cruisers and put money, my sign?
Capital.
Oh, it goes into the capital for that, not like the cruisers has its own fund. It just all goes into the capital.
Right.
But we don't, we don't have a capital. We do.
We do.
We just moved money at the special.
I think we put seventy-five grand in it at the special, so there's a couple hundred in there now.
That's good. With the extra money that we got already for chapter ninety for rural roads. I forget how much that was.
Seventeen.
How much?
One seventeen.
One seventeen. So is there a chance that because that was unplanned, we might be doing more lining or painting because of that? No?
No.
Okay.
No, no, because just the main roads, that's the ones that we strike. Yeah, we don't do like Lincoln Road and, you know, strike.
And we're forecast, we're predicted to get the same distribution of rural road funds this year?
Yeah, we normally get around a hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty-five thousand. The dead one seventeen is just like.
That's extra.
That's an extra.
And we're going to get the same extra.
Actually, we get a hundred and forty-two thousand wrap, so.
That hundred seventeen, what can you spend it on?
Roads.
Just, just roads.
Well, yeah, nah, yeah, I don't think you can do it on equipment. No, it's just the infrastructure.
Right. The snow and ice is a six thousand dollar reduction.
He did that.
Twenty-three was ninety-six eight, then it went to ninety-two, FY twenty-four. And twenty-five, you're asking for seventy-three four.
Kevin, if I could, if I could comment on, I think that.
It's all level.
I'd overlook the snow and ice contract services. You didn't budget for that this year?
No, we just put that back in there.
Right, but when you submitted your budget for twenty-five, it's not.
It wasn't, right.
Intentionally?
No, no, I want, that's got to stay there.
So it was, it was left off? It was left off is what I'm saying. That's what I thought. I think it needs something there.
So that eighteen.
Well, if you, but he spent thirty-six hundred this year.
Okay.
So. I was thinking maybe something in the five range, Don, if I had a number out there, might be enough without the ten, because you put the ten in and it's. It's there.
Well, it's. I was mistaken. You put the ten, you talked to the contract services?
Yes, yeah, you.
I'm thinking the other seven thousand we put in for the salaries. Part-time salaries. In FY twenty-four budget. Part-time and seasonal. Yeah, the contract services, that was. He's going to hire snow plows.
Right, that was a pretty big thing that we talked about prior to the special town meeting, because you were concerned it was going to be a hard winter and you weren't able to find people that you needed, so you said we're going to have to hire, right?
It's a, it's a. Fortunately, I have manpower to put in these trucks. Whoever, you know, there's been years that, no, I can't find anybody. And I'm, this year we're going to lose three of the guys that are working for me now. I'm going to keep doing it. They're done. So whoever's coming in next year, they're going to be in the same boat. They're going to find help. And if you look around, you cannot fill these positions.
So you, we should budget something there is what you're saying.
Well, keep the seven thousand. The contract service, yeah, I will keep some money in there in case you do have to hire a truck. You, you don't know. Mother nature can, you don't know what she got thrown at you. You know, we could have a nasty winter the rest of this year. You know? You don't know. Are the winters like we used to have? No, absolutely not. But there's still, you know, these snowstorms, you get snows for twenty hours, you get an inch of snow. It's just, it's just time-consuming and it's cost, it's more costly. And if it dumped two feet of snow, you plowed it off, you're done, you know.
Well, a couple storms ago, the, the storm that never happened, I mean, you had to call the guys in because they were forecasting snow again. And then it was nothing, but we had to put that money out for all those people to be activated.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, we never, we never had to call them in, but I, you know. I feed these guys, so we, you know, I had all kinds of food ready and it's like, it's on the freezer over there. We didn't.
I would have come down.
But that, that happened, you know, twice. So you can't, I mean, I, I listen to the weatherman. I listen to every single channel that I.
Exactly. You do the best that you can do with things like that. There's, there is nothing definite that we can count on.
There's been many, many times over the years that we've been up here and predicting a heavy snowstorm and you get an inch.
Right.
Yeah.
Just doesn't materialize. It wasn't the first time. Snow and ice, I just level funded it.
Yep.
And so.
Yes.
Some years it goes up, some years it doesn't. The sand is, the sand is going up. Sand's knocking them down.
Your deficit spend. Your deficit spend, contracted services.
The deficit spent on last year?
Can we?
Oh, I don't know, that's up to you guys, figure that one out. I have no idea. If it's under snow and ice, I, I would say so, yeah. I think it is under snow and ice.
Didn't it used to be under snow and ice?
Yep.
So then you could leave it at the?
Uh-huh.
Give it at the, there it is? The thirty-six hundred?
Think I still got my head above water.
Oh, whatever we, oh, we funded at ten.
But I think he was saying five.
Okay.
That was something in there.
Yeah.
Alan, for contracted services, you wanna do five?
I would be supportive of five, I mean, I say, again, it's the same thing we always say, Don, until you get the final budget put together. But I think he, he needs something there, whoever's coming in. And I think five is reasonable. I think it's thirty-six hundred right now, there's no, no more coming this year, I wouldn't think, most likely, you never know, I know, I know. But I wouldn't expect much more, so I would, I would support five for the finance committee.
Is that contract services just under snow and ice or is that?
That's just snow and ice.
Yeah.
Why is it below the line, do you know?
Like what?
It's below the sum? So should I unblacken? That column K and put the five thousand there?
That's what I was gonna say, yeah.
Well, it's actually, Aaron, what you're going to do is ultimately, if we put it in the budget, it'll be a line item with, in the budget itself. Because what you're putting it into is actually an article.
Oh, that's the article, so there should be something.
Yeah, that's the article that funded it.
So was it never, did this?
It was new, it was a new item.
Oh, so there hadn't.
There's no line item in the budget for it yet, so we'll have to put a new line item in for the twenty-five budget.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's right, okay.
Yeah.
But at least it show, this will show that it was a, um, a special town meeting.
Yes, all the ones that are.
Below.
Red, red, special.
Okay.
Articles that have been approved.
Okay.
And that's just, again, many of those do become budget items, so that's how we track it in the finance.
Good.
Else, go.
Kevin, which truck needs to be replaced first?
Ninety-six.
The ninety-six one, okay.
Well, it's a toss-up between that and one of the small trucks. Small truck, one parked right here, we use every day.
How small is that?
The one ton.
Do we need anything smaller?
No.
Running around and pulling a trailer or?
We have the pickup that I run. It's an F two fifty.
Okay.
Um, the one that's, gets used every day is an F five fifty, that's a two thousand eleven.
Yeah.
It's, it's seen better days.
Yeah.
But, like I said, I, I, I'm gonna let the next guy.
Right.
It's his preference, he might like Chevy instead of Ford.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're looking at, at least two trucks within the next few years probably needing to be replaced.
I mean, the ninety-six, it's got the age on it, but it doesn't have a, I think it's just about a hundred thousand on it. Keep maintaining, they stay running.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Anybody else have anything, Kevin?
I'm, I'm good.
No, I'm good.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Kev.
You're welcome.
So, Jim?
I have to figure out how to, um. Get back sharing presentations.
You shouldn't have to follow up that one.
That's the way you went first, right?
Interesting, Tim, just the ones that.
Yep.
You're asking for increases, just go through them.
Yeah, I kind of summarize everything overall. Um, so the reason some of our stuff's going up, last year we did eighty-six responses total. This year, we're already at twenty-six, and we're only in February. Now, that being said, it's because I went and trained everybody for medicals, so we're doing first responders now. The good news about first responder calls.
You did how many last year?
Last year, eighty-six total. We probably did, I mean, I go on a lot more, but I don't count those in the budget because, um, by salary, it doesn't cost me anything if I go for medical. What I did this year is I've been training everyone, first responder, I've got three people in EMT school right now. So we're trying to go to every medical to provide a first responder service. So this kind of ties into everything, so now that we're doing that, we're tracking more runs. It's not that we're having an increase in town, but we're responding to more, more runs, so this year we're already at twenty-six. Uh, I predict we'll probably be around one fifty for the year, that's kind of like, kind of my guess. Um.
Well, if you're twenty-six, Tim, they get much more in the later part of the year, cuz you're in, you've only got, what, five months left this year?
No, this is calendar year for runs, runs go calendar year.
Calendar year, okay.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Excuse me, I was, no, I said, runs go with town.
Runs always get tracked calendar year.
Okay.
That's all for our interest report and stuff like that, so, uh, but it still translates to say, we're gonna be doing, again, about another probably seventy-five to eighty more responses a year than we, we have done in the past.
I, I do think you're under selling the services that you're providing by responding, even if it's not a financial impact. Are you tracking?
Yeah, I track when I got, yeah, I track when I, when I go as well, but again, there's no cost to the town when I go, I consider that's our salary.
But it's good to show to people.
Yeah, I, there still will be numbers for that, but it's no, no cost.
Yeah.
Uh, another reason for some of the increases this year, we've had three people graduate from Call Ball Academy this year. We had three graduate last year, and I've got another one in right now. Uh, the good news is to offset some of this stuff, I had almost twenty thousand dollars in grants last year. Uh, so some of the stuff that, rather than have to ask the town for, I've been able to, to purchase. Another reason we have some of these increases this year, I have gone up from about three or four academics, I tripled up to twenty, my goal's about twenty-five, or something, I would often say, that's it. And then if people stop showing up, we get rid of them, or ask them, you gotta step up, I'm not gonna just start taking people's names, I would have to be active. Um, and then some of the other increases we've had is I'm just trying to step up the training a little bit to get people to where they need to be. We've done a lot of training with surrounding towns, uh, I'm real worried about like things with like liability, so I'm trying to step up like the driver training. Uh, even just the basic skills that if anyone ever gets hurt or injured, that they go look at us and say, have you covered this? All of this is an added cost to both materials, uh, training fees and payroll of course. And we've been able to offer some more advanced stuff that we've been, I can network kind of for free, like the fuel fires we did at Logan, stuff like that, there's no cost to us. But it's something that we're still doing. Some notable events this year, um, obviously, our costs have gone up a little bit, I don't mind doing it, it's not that much, but it does increase staffing. When we do town meetings and stuff here, that's the cost for, um, you know, guys setting up, breaking down, stuff like that. We're doing open houses, senior events, Halloween events. Um, we had a couple of good-sized brush fires last year, they ate up some salary money, some serious accidents, um, and I could offset some of that too, I've been using scouts and high school volunteers. To come for free. Uh, some of the stuff went to last year, Rutland Spencer, I've seen all that stuff. Uh, current budget, again, I'm asking, my big raise there, and this was a level funded. I didn't come for raises, but I went to the fifty-five thousand for the part-time, and that's because of everything I just mentioned. Um, I don't know, that doesn't really figure in, if you give everyone a one percent or two percent raise, it would, I went on based on last year's numbers here. And the way I broke that all down is I, I kind of broke it all down here by, right here, I based everything on nineteen dollars an hour. Uh, everybody gets six hours training a month, but not all twenty or twenty-five people come, about fifteen people do. That works out to about twenty thousand, five hundred dollars. I figured the eighty-five or eighty-six fire calls, about two and a half, two hours average, you're paying a person. Again, I figured on six members for that, you know, we're not getting. We're not getting twenty people for every average fire call, obviously, the bigger ones, they get twenty people, the ones that get less. Uh, the EMS calls, the additional ones I'm paying for, those are one-hour piece, two members per call, it's nineteen hundred dollars a year. The academy training, that's paying someone, again, they're going sixteen hours a week, I'm only paying them for eight hours because I can't pay for the full thing, it's kind of a give-take thing. That's the thirty-six hundred, then the live burns we do, uh, and that's where I got that fifty-five thousand, I didn't just, I didn't just make up that number, I did facts, that's how I got that number. Um, and that doesn't include any step raises that we give. Uh, next line items, sorry, this one? Uh, then down my line items here, the telephone, a little bit of an increase, because, uh, that telephone actually covers the internet for the whole building as well. Um, but then we cover my cell phone now, that has never increased for that, that's a couple hundred bucks a month, just the, the cover of that month, a year, would break down and cover all that. Um, I left mine, I didn't change my salary number. I figured on the half of a full-time, that's kind of where it was based at before. I didn't, I just left that number. Same. Physicals, I decreased this because we're not hiring the mass hiring we were, we needed, we first hired everybody, still sending people physicals, but I'm not sending fifteen people physicals, so I knocked that one down by a couple of grand, I reduced that one. Uh, education and prevention, I lowered that one by a hundred bucks because I got lucky enough, I got three, four, five thousand dollars a year in grants. And again, I'm saving money cuz I'm the one doing the teaching and the programs, and there's no salary for me where it used to be paid out to people. So I can kind of eat that up with grants, things like that. Uh, training, this here was the, uh, I kept this one the same, this is the fees, when I use other people's burn buildings, stuff like that. Uh, building maintenance, this is one I asked to increase a little bit, I'm glad Kevin's still here, he can attest to this. Um, the, the building is in good shape, but it's getting to be a struggle to keep it in good shape now, it's, it's getting older. I was very fortunate and thanked the town for the roof repairs and the new floor, but as you can see, we haven't done ceiling tiles, I have lights out.
Hmm.
That adds up quick, we only get thirty hundred dollars a year for my side of the building. What was the generator, Kevin, along this year, with something twelve hundred, twelve hundred bucks?
Generator, generator maintenance.
Uh, HVAC this year was like eighteen hundred bucks, each paid half for repairs. Um, you know, we pay for things like the fuel pump testing out back, so there's a lot of stuff there that thirty hundred bucks really is, that's just basic fees for annual maintenance, that's not covering it.
There's a lot of hidden, there's a lot of hidden.
Yeah, so, there's a lot of stuff there we're looking at, um, and this is something down the road we don't look at to kind of. You know, maybe sink some money into the building to keep it for another fifty years, you know, it's a good building, it's a perfect size, we just have to keep up what we have. Uh, vehicle maintenance, uh, no increase in this, lucky with the new engine, that shouldn't need anything. The problem with this is I'm not, unlike highway, we're not allowed to fix our stuff. NFPA requirements, um, and this happened after the two firefighters in Boston were killed. No one will even, I can't even call a place and say, hey, come fix like the brakes on my truck, they have to be an EBT, emergency vehicle technician. And there's very few people that are certified in that, um, so I can't use a bunch of people around that are unbelievable mechanics, I'm not allowed to use them, if you call them, they won't even come. So that's just how to do a business, so I don't need any increase. Um, but even things like, and Kevin can attest, like an oil change, you're a thousand bucks for a routine service on a truck nowadays, between oil filters, all that stuff, you know, nothing's, nothing's cheap. Knock on wood, that ten thousand is more than enough to do all the re, regular stuff. And if, God forbid, if something big ever happens, I'll be coming to the board for that, but we don't even budget that, that's a case-by-case basis. Uh, equipment testing, I got actual quotes for this. Um, things are up a little bit, but not much, uh, cuz we have to do our biannual air pack testing, so it went up nine hundred and five dollars for the unpacks. Uh, office supplies, again, I don't really need anything, I have a good, uh, stockpile in my cabinet there, stuff like that, so I decreased that by a hundred bucks. Nothing really crazy there. Firefighting supplies, so this is something that we have between our equipment, um, and I have two lines, and it was separate before I took over, I don't know why we don't make them into one. But there's firefighting supplies, and the next one is, uh, where was it, new equipment. So we've been using that for different things that we have, um, what I did is I wanted to break down, so I, I wanted to just. Between those two, it's almost thirty thousand dollars, which say, that's a lot of money, but I brought some stuff out here so you could see how ridiculous the prices have gotten. Uh, things like the helmet, the helmet alone, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars. The stupid front that just says O-CAM, they charge you separate for that now, a hundred and five dollars, so you're talking six fifty for a, for a helmet. This turnout coat, I think I said eighteen hundred bucks on the coat, fourteen hundred bucks for a pair of pants, they're only good for ten years. Apparently, and I know we, I was fortunate enough with you guys funding me last year for a couple of sets, they must have got a grant long before me and bought everything at once. Cuz I'm hitting everything is.
The same.
The same age, and I'm like, I've got guys going to the academy, they can't wear any of the stuff that the academy wear for calls. They not allowed to wear it at the academy cuz it's not compliant, so we switch off gear, go in the academy. So what I've been doing, once someone graduates the academy, I've been buying them new gear, then they kind of, I don't want to spend the money on if they're not gonna stick around and do it. Uh, I do have three sets on order with some of this money I have left over this year, but it's six months to get it, it'll be before the end of fiscal year. And this stuff has gone through the roof. Uh, other stuff, it's absolutely crazy, things like this nozzle, it's twelve hundred bucks, you know? Uh, this valve here is thirty-one hundred dollars, a stupid little coupling here, ninety-five dollars. This is where my money's going, uh, and the problem is every year when we do all our testing, I lose one or two of these items. You know, they, they test everything when they do a hose testing, if this blows out, like fortunately, this is a new one, if this blows out, I can rebuild it. The old ones we had, when they blow out, it's just, it's time for a new one, so we're slowly trying to get back up, uh, in the thing. Some other stuff we have to be prepared for, the air bottles there, those are fifteen hundred dollars. I was, again, they were lucky, they got a grant in, I think it was two thousand fifteen, they got a grant. In another. Eleven years, I can't get those bottles filled anymore. You know, I'm not saying that I don't, I wouldn't trust it, but I can't do anything with it, it's just the lifespan they have on the stuff. Uh, the D-Fibs, they're nineteen hundred dollars for a D-Fib. Again, all of ours are the exact same year, I milked them along, I was very fortunate, Kevin Tucker got me a couple of batteries that he found, cuz they don't make them anymore, but he found a couple of old ones. So I got those going for now, but this is the stuff that, like this coming year, once those batteries die, I have to get new ones. Um, but the gears, the, the gears, the, the biggest, the biggest issue. Uh, radios, this is the new radio from the engine, forty-eight hundred dollars for the radio, four hundred dollars for the charger, so that's fifty, two hundred dollars. Just to talk to somebody, it's absolutely crazy, these are the ones we're running right now. You know, uh, have, you know, you probably have these back in the day, we're still, we're still using these.
We can zoom in once we're not doing this.
Yeah, I'll go back, I'll show you the budget, so, uh, this one I left the same, six thousand dollars last year, six thousand dollars next year. Uh, uniforms, I went up for a little bump in this. Uh, we had seven fifty, again, that was great when we had four or five people, but you know, a pair, like when they send them to the academy, they have to, they're required to show up in a pair of blue pants, one button-up shirt and a T-shirt. You know, I sent three, four guys, that seven fifty is gone, doesn't leave anything for anybody else, you know, we're not getting dress homes or anything for anybody, we're just looking for a T-shirt and a pair of pants.
Right.
The academy, Memorial Day, stuff like that, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, the equipment, this is another one, this was twenty-five, um, I changed it, I, I submitted the twenty-five, which was even to last year. I bumped it back down to twenty to try to offset some of that salary. I'm willing with the new engine, um, I was able to, you know, some of this stuff here, I don't need now, so I sit down to twenty, and ninety percent of that's gonna go to. Turnout gear and then other miscellaneous equipment that just ages out over time.
So new equipment, you, you see you're taking down to twenty?
Yeah, twenty, twenty thousand even. So I did the numbers of the turnout gear and stuff like that, again, I'm trying, I was trying to do the best I can to level fun. Level fun, but then I realized the salary was a big jump, and so I tried to eat up anywhere I could to, to not be greedy and, and do what I could with it. Uh, communication equipment. This one here, we have fifteen hundred dollars. Uh, again, silly things like the batteries, which they don't even make, that I have to buy aftermarket batteries for our current radios. I buy a half dozen of these, that money's gone for the, we're just, we're just on survival mode with that. I do apply for grants for this, um, this is a big issue, one after both us and the police, and if we'll get for long-term stuff, hopefully dispatch will maybe come up with something. And I do have another grant in with Barry to try to replace everything, a reasonable grant, see what happens. And I do, as I kept the same, there's really no, no change, it'll stay in the same. And then some of the long-term stuff, I didn't, uh, you know, I don't need any trucks, very fortunate, the town, we're in good shape for a long time, trucks-wise. As I did mention, the turnout gear is something that we are gonna need to work on, but if we keep that money, if I can slowly do it every year, that'll help whoever comes down the road, because we're never gonna hit that wall of everybody needing it once, we'll just keep it constant every year. Um, the HVAC in here, Kevin knows more about that one, he's been kind of lead on that one. That's something in here, we've talked about whether switching to propane, and it's, you know, we're, we're milking it along every year, but that's something this building is gonna need down the road.
And, uh, just to point out, this MVP grant we're doing, and potentially maybe green community down the road, maybe. Um, that pays for all of that HVAC stuff if we decide to go down that road.
But that is something, again, these are just, this is not something I'm asking for right now, this is stuff I want. Just to be aware of, so you're never blindsided, you know, the radios, again, maybe we can look at something long-term for the radios, maybe fifty grand a year for five years if the grant's fault, or just something to break it up and make it. I don't wanna go to the town and ask for a lot of money, they were great to support me. Uh, the jaws of life, again, that's our last big expense. Uh, the jaws of life, again, that's our last big expense. It's. A need, again, not this year, not next year, but within two, three, four years, it's going to be a must. Um, I just got another price for sixty grand rather than ninety. Um, for a, another set that I think will be fine for us. Again, I'm trying to shop deals and stuff, so. But that's something down the road we have to think about and I'm working.
We have two sets now though, right?
We've got two old sets, yeah. Last they gave us their old one, they were thrown out when they get the rescue. I said, I'll take it because one breaks, I'll. Okay, I'll do it. I'll run it.
Yeah, okay.
Well, they're both the same era.
Okay.
Um, lastly too, here, this is something I'd like to eventually get if we come up with some extra money. Uh, we need storage. So shipping container out back, uh, about fifty, five hundred bucks for a big, a good weather, watertight one.
Oh, yeah.
Back.
Uh, it was up to seven thousand before.
It has gone down.
Yeah, they're everywhere now.
I know when we were looking for it, it was, it was hard to find.
Yeah.
That's a place over.
We got a small.
I even see them online locally. There's somebody.
Well, we bought the one for the town hall over in Brookfield.
Yeah.
And then.
It's brand new and it's a one trip they call it.
Oh, one trip, yes.
It's like a brand new container.
Yeah. And lastly here, this, I've mentioned this to me before, this is my dream here. This will be before I leave, I will be getting this done in the next six years. Out back, if you've driven by Brookfield's training facility, they've got the, again, shipping containers. They weld them together. They use it as a burn building, a search and rescue trailer. Um, and I want a three telephone poles or the one-story thing we can put a ladder up to. Um, and I'm going to work on grants for this, but I want you to know that's something I am going to be working on because, and Brookfield lets us use this, we have to.
Is it North Brookfield?
North Brookfield, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, we have to pay to use it. The only reason I don't use it more than I do is because it puts us way out of. We need us all to go to a live burn and we're all there and something happens here.
Oh, yes.
And because now you can just get in and go because all our hoses are out, we're actually fighting a real fire. So this is something down the road that I just want the board to be aware that I am going to work on. Doesn't take up a big footprint, you know, somewhere out back there. Um, this is kind of something that on my long-term agenda, I'd love to see here. And before I leave. Uh, like to tackle something like this and have it, have it all back. And it's basically just those Conex boxes, they weld them together. And you can do live fires in them. You can make smoke in them, stuff like that. It's just a great, a great tool to have and it would keep people's motivation and their interest. And this is the very last thing. I just added this slide in yesterday. Um, be, with IMC going, now IMC is fantastic. I did all my reporting on it. I do all my budget stuff. Um, I, you, you asked, guys asked me something last week and I had it in seconds. What was it? Oh, the fire truck stuff. In a matter of seconds, I can pull up and I did it for this presentation. I have everything down to a penny of what I've spent since July first. And I can do it the second I process an invoice and give it to Mary Bell and updates it and I can print a new one out. So I have. More accurate than even the company has. And I use that to go back and forth to balance the books every week. But we're getting rid of IMC. I guess it's no longer being supported and gone. So I'm going to need software next year because I don't believe the new software dispatch is getting does accounting. It does our run reports. It does the fire reporting and EMS, but I, nothing I've seen yet does. So we're going to need some sort of accounting software.
But does your payroll?
I, IMC does everything. So the way that works is when I track there, when I dispatch puts the times in, everything comes down to the second I run. You know, I could put Don Appicelli's name in, tells me to the minute, and then I print the report out and that's what I give you. That's how it wants pays to the, I pay P eleven. A minute, you can pay a pay five.
And that's why we were relying on this payroll to make, to not have to go over to Harper's for the fire.
It's like we're going to have to.
Yeah.
So, but this works, again, I mean, I, so I'm going to, even if we switch payroll, I'm going to need something for.
Invoices.
Invoices and, and stuff like that. So I don't know what, I mean, I saw QuickBooks, as long as I can print the cover sheet to give to the. Accountant, and I don't know anything about software, accounting software, just to know.
Yeah, QuickBooks does all of that.
Can I print that cover sheet? But I'm going to need.
Or you can. I mean, I know that you're, I think the only one that does the cover sheet from. Um, IMC, everybody else just does it on a. You know, Excel spreadsheet, cover sheet.
But I like having the.
No, I mean.
The record.
Record to the penny.
Yeah.
Instant at my fingertips. Like if you, if you right now said, hey, what's this? I can be, before you can finish asking the question, I can come up with IMC and print what we have.
I mean, they're not, it wouldn't be expensive to get QuickBooks.
Yeah, what, I don't, I don't, but I'm going to have to come up with. You know, I know some software gets weird, like a thousand dollars because you get a license. I don't know what.
Yeah, if you're a business.
I, that I don't know. And I think that's. Yeah, that's it. And I just want to really thank the, both the FinCom for the support last year. This engine has been huge. Um, and the board since I've been chief because it's. You know. I've had a lot of asks and you guys have met all of them. It's, it's made this time come a long way. So thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
Okay, thanks.
You know, Don, a comment from the finance committee?
Yeah, good.
I mean, I, I think the only thing that you, you, you basically level funded everything except for your. Um, training wages, part-time wages.
Yep.
And you're at, if you take five thousand dollars, you're at seventy five hundred. So I think our, you know, from a financial perspective, we would say, okay, that's, that's a possibility. Let's get the whole budget put together, see if it's reality or not. From my perspective, Don, at this point, uh. Like the police, the fire department got a big win last year. You know, the police had a couple of years in a row now with hard time officer, then full-time officer, now full-time chief. We got the truck. Um, you know, I think everyone supports the fire department. I know the finance committee, all, we, we talked about this last week when we were together. Our support there, but we said, okay, we, we really need to see the whole budget. Right now, we're still looking at about a six and a half percent increase before salary considerations, so.
Yeah. I, um, is it okay if Tim shows, uh, does the examples of what it costs for each of these? Things again, for the viewing audience?
Can you go through each of them and show?
So this here, again, uh, hydro assist valve, uh, thirty, I don't think we've replaced, but thirty one hundred dollars. For that, uh, silly little fittings like this, uh, you know, inch and a half fitting, ninety five dollars. Uh, radios, these are the portal radios, how we talk to each other or dispatch. Uh, forty eight hundred dollars for the radio, four hundred for the charger. Uh, larger sized couplings, again, it's just a piece of spun aluminum too, which is crazy, but four hundred and ten dollars for this. Uh, nozzles, which again, uh, we have a lot of really old ones. We can't certify anymore, but this, you know, twelve hundred dollars for the nozzle. Uh, things like the helmet, five hundred and seventy eight dollars for the helmet, another hundred dollars for the front. So you're talking six fifty a year. So I think when you buy this package. And then the turnout gear, which is the fire coat, pants, you're a little over three thousand for that boots, another hundred dollars. So again, you're thirty, but any new fire, I don't know, thirty five hundred dollars to, to quit.
Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Good question for the chief, this Steve Donald, FinCom. Um, so with the new radios, are you going to try to combine yourself with the police department as well?
So, well, currently we are, we're all the same. The radios are the same as far as frequencies goes. It's just different channels, you know, we've got. Uh, it's the same radio.
Three channels.
Yeah, now I know Fred just got a grant, I think for six radios, if I'm not mistaken. Um, so I don't know how many more he needs. I don't know how many. He's a little dimmer. Every officer has one assigned to him. We don't, we haven't proceeds to our truck. Um, again, with the new engine, I've got four, going to need four for each of the other engines. Two for the rescue. And two for the forestry is what I'd. What.
Do we have? Like, uh, uh, another question I have too, as far as the regional, um. Uh, dispatch goes, right? Do they, we have to pay into, uh, we obviously pay into that, but. I'm saying like the, the tower and everything else, the broadcast or that, do we have to like worry about any of that type of cost coming down the pipe too? Like them having to update the tower or anything like that for the channels?
No, that's usually covered by the state nine one one grant.
The only, the only one thing he did mention is he wants to upgrade our radios to, to digital technology. Uh, which again, the new ones that we buy would have it, but we, all the chiefs got together and told them, that's great. But you can't do that without a funding source because none, no town around can afford that kind of. That thing. I mean, that is where the future, eventually we're going to be mandated by the state, we have to go there, but until that point. You know, so, uh, he does look for grants for us. But there's nothing out there yet. Oh, ambulance, I forgot to mention ambulance. The, I talked to Seth today, next year, so next year is the same, almost about the same twenty seven, I think. And next year is the last year of our contract. FY twenty six, and I said, I know you can't give me a price yet. But we're not talking like it's tripling or, and he said, no, you'll probably see a little increase because it's based on population. Like the first time it was, again, negotiated before me, but he said, maybe we're talking, you know, thirty. You know, from twenty seven to thirty, like it's not, we're not tripling Dublin, which is still a lot cheaper than. Um, and ambulance, again, I have a lot of people asking me now, we're going medical, so we are going to take the ambulance back. And like I've said, it's not that I'm against that, but in reality, with the way it's working now and what we're paying, we're getting a better service. You know, and I just buy the ambulance is four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And you got to replace that every ten years, like that's, that would be forty five thousand dollars a year. They went and they're paying twenty seven, so. And that's just for the truck. That's not staff training.
Training.
We're getting ALS coverage, whereas we're only BLS.
Yep.
We're guaranteed a crew.
Yep.
It was a good deal when the decision was made to go there.
Yep.
And it's still a good deal.
It's, and it's working great. Unfortunately, one of the three times I could think of when we got a Pax and ambulance was someone. Might be in this room, but otherwise we're always getting. Otherwise, we always get a roll in ambulance within a matter of minutes.
And we're still using Rollins?
Maybe we can use that to negotiate something, yep, so. Uh, but it's been working great. It's a very robust neutral aid system where. And you know what? That doesn't mean that, doesn't happen with, we had our own ambulance. There's plenty of times when we're out and. Another one comes in, you know, so that's just the way stuff happens.
And I think there might be people that would question, well, why are we doing first responder calls? But at the end of the day, we're, we are getting to our people as soon as possible.
Right.
Potentially sooner than the truck, the ambulance rolls in. So there's a return on investment there of the little bit that we're going to pay to pay for that call.
Right, the way, if, if, you know, someone goes down, a cardiac arrest, Rollins averaging between seven and ten minutes, which is good response. But if you're not breathing, that's a long time. Whereas if we're coming, might be three or four minutes, you're savable at that point. So it just, just stock care. And you know what? Just the mental, just even if it's not that serious, just having someone there saying, hey, it's okay, the ambulance will be here in a minute. It goes a long ways. You know.
We're required to respond, period. Police and fire, that's the whole idea.
Yeah.
So. It's not like he can pick and choose what call he wants to go on. The police can't do it either.
He just has to get called.
And on that note, I have a meeting this week with them.
I was trying to open the window there. Open the door there.
So, again. I have faith, we're going to fix it.
Not saying a word. Much to say, I'm, I'm not going to. All right.
Very well done.
Thanks, Tim.
Thanks, Tim.
Anybody have any questions for fire?
I do not.
No, I can show you guys where all this stuff goes if you want to help me put my.
Dinner's waiting.
Do you have any new business for the board?
Uh, can I, that, open to us?
Uh, there's public session too.
What about the FinCom reserve?
Yeah.
Is that a new business?
That's open as all, new business for us.
I just came in. Looking around this place to the highway.
Application. Candidate lives in New Hampshire.
Oh, beautiful.
I need to New Hampshire.
Yeah, nice commute every day.
It'll work with. Bennington, New Hampshire? It's about an hour and a half away.
I bet it's very possible this person would be moving.
Yeah, if it was two hundred thousand.
Old business reserve on transfer request.
It's the request.
Oh, this is the, uh, emergency repair to the generator at the Ocam School. Six thousand eight hundred eighty dollars and eighty-five cents. They have tied maintenance and repair into capital. With that contract way at the bottom. They bring it back up to the top to capital.
Refer to.
So no matter what they do is capital.
So why do they have to repair?
So we're on the hook for this.
Yeah.
And the way it's worded, it's not the first five thousand. This is sixty eight hundred. We're on the hook for sixty eight hundred, which I think is totally preposterous. It should be eighteen hundred. But that's me. So we, we need to pay this bill.
Yes, we do.
Your motion.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Pick one, Mary Bell.
Wrong with that generator down there. It's old. It's getting.
So it's going to become a capital.
It's getting hard to get parts for.
A real one.
Couple of switches on it, but they had a hard time finding.
Action of finance committee. Okay, let's go to the finance. Let's turn the board to select.
We will take it under consideration.
Raise some money.
All right, public session.
Alright, do we want to do this?
Don, as information, we're not meeting this week. It'll be next week before we meet on it.
Oh, okay, yeah, alright.
Okay, you're not meeting this Wednesday?
No, it'll be next Wednesday.
I, I missed last Wednesday. Somehow it got by me.
Posted both online and on the bulletin board.
Yeah.
I got to say, forgot to send your personal invite. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Next time I'll remember.
We got the reservation. Yep, yep.
I figured you'd be doing every other Wednesday. I just didn't know which one was the other.
Yep, I skipped over shared clerk.
Oh, I have a quick question. Are we in public session?
Not yet.
Oh.
Um, so on the agenda is, uh, shared clerk. We received an email from the assessor's office. Um, that, uh, the person, um, that they had as an assistant assessor clerk.
Just a clerk, yeah.
Um, resigned, and I believe the last time she was there was actually Nova. Um.
Quite a while ago.
And, um, from the assessors, they said that they would be open to the concept of a shared clerk for this position. Um, I believe it's five, five hours. Um, and, um, uh. Yeah, I, I think, um, we should, if they're open to it. I wonder if we first start with the two clerks that we have to see if there was any interest.
Yeah.
Um, even in the interim basis until June thirtieth. Um, into the next fiscal year. Um, because potentially you have the town clerk assistant, you have. This one, um, for the assessors and we still, we already have the board of health, but.
Yeah.
Um, it would be under night, under the twenty hours.
Right.
And we have two potential candidates who might be interested in picking up some extra hours to meet the need. I know that the primary assessor clerk is overwhelmed, is exhausted from doing both jobs. Um, and, um, I think if we can help, uh, this, uh, board, uh, it'll be in our long-term best interest.
Okay. Can ask them.
Hmm, you'll have to. Who's the second one?
Sue and the, um, police. Minister of Assistant, sorry.
Sue and Sue.
Oh, is it? Yeah.
Yeah, Sue and Sue.
Yeah. That's.
I don't think about that one because it's in another building.
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, I'll see you a week.
Because it has to be somebody who's aware of the work that the assessors have to do and it's not the same as what the board of health needs.
And I asked, um, uh. Andrea, um, and she said that, um, she could, she's not sure how she, that she has the time to train, but she would train. Um, and what she needs this person to do could be done at any hour. Um, so I think that would potentially fit, I know with maybe the board of health clerk. Um, and I'm not sure what the other Sue.
Would the training be set based on her schedule now?
She, uh, the board of health clerk does not have a schedule.
Um, for the board of assessors.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I know she worked somewhere else, so.
Yeah.
She'd have to work around that.
Yep. They can work that out.
Yeah, and, um, I also realized that we did not set the board of health clerks pay. Um, when I was orienting her today, um, we did not set a pay rate. Um, and in my mind, I was thinking we were going to offer whatever the last one made, um, but I don't know what that is.
Eighteen and change. Eighteen twenty seven or fifty seven. I, I think, uh, the treasurer would know where she left off.
So I would move that we offer the previous, um, pay rate?
We have to, yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Because we didn't set that.
That's.
Because we had three people being hired that same night, so they all went to the eighteen twenty seven, whatever.
Right. Okay. Okay.
So it's okay for me to have her put that down?
Yeah.
Yep. Hey, Tim?
Yeah, so I just want, I, I know we just talked about this, but I wanted official on record. What's happened occasionally is Dispatch is forgetting to send us medicals in our own town. Um, I will give them credit, they've made it as simple as possible, there's actually a button on their dispatch for a computer screen. There's a button that says, "Ocam Medical", when they hit that button, it automatically at the same time tones out Ruttland and us together. It's that simple. But what the Dispatches are doing, they say, well, Ruttland handles it, they just hit the Ruttland button, well, it's not a Ruttland. So, I have some concerns after what happened the other night, because their excuse to me was, they were busy and there was a lot going on. And I said, what if it's my, one of my firefighters, and we have a house fire, and he called a Mayday? Are they going to be busy and a lot going on, and going to skip an important step? Or what if, and we all know the way these towns work, when those thunderstorms roll through, Barry's chasing trees down, and hundreds of guys down, and then we have a got for the cardiac arrest, and somebody needs something, or we have a house fire, they're going, oh, we're busy? So to me, that was the wrong answer to give me, which kind of gave me a bad taste in my mouth. I did reach out to him, very diplomatically, email saying this has been, and this isn't the first time, this has been going on and on. Um, so we have a meeting set up, well, he emailed, just go back in this afternoon, we're going to set up a meeting with him. And, but I did put it in writing, and I want it publicly spoken, on record here, that if it doesn't get fixed, it could be injury or harm to somebody, and I don't ever want to see that, whether it's one of my staff or a citizen in this town, those are my two priorities, so I just want to go on record that it does need to be dealt with. And I'll come back next week with hopeless answers.
Okay. All right, I think Steve had something.
Yes, um, yep, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, um, Aaron, uh, when I get back next week, um, so that I can transfer this Zoom stuff over to you, since you have access to the BLS distribution list, um, I'm going to need to work with you remotely, if that's okay with you?
Absolutely. Yeah, because I tried to change something, uh, I guess it sent you a code or something.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll get that changed up.
Yeah.
Yeah, and are we, you guys are cool with it being on the board of selecting distribution list, because people come and go, right, and?
Yeah.
Um, all right, cool.
For the log.
We'll do it that way, and then, yeah, and then we'll do the same thing for YouTube as well.
Yeah, um, and just so you know, um, Maribel and I discovered that we thought that this meeting room um, would be.
It's not the same number.
It's, it changes every meeting. So every time I do a new meeting, it gives you a new, um, ID number.
It shouldn't be giving you a new ID, because the other one doesn't do that.
Yeah, I know.
It does, okay, I will, uh, I'll have to troubleshoot that then.
Yeah, so it's not a, a permanent, I think there is an option in Zoom to create it as a permanent, and um, so we ended up posting what it was
Yeah, the wrong number.
When I tested it.
All right, yeah, so I will take a look at that, um, uh, before we transfer over, just so that we can get that finited in, um. And then, uh, what was I going to say? Yeah, so we'll, we'll take a look at that, um. Because, yeah, I was looking on the site, uh, on our town, saying the meeting number was like, oh, this doesn't exist, what the fuck is going on? So. Yeah, well, we'll, I'll fix that, um, other than that, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll get that going, and I'll sync up with you next week when I get back from Mexico.
Okay, thank you. Go drink the water.
Yep. I don't, I try not to. All right, if that's good, I'm going to drop off, guys, thank you.
Okay, Steve, thanks.
No problem.
During zone on the agenda, so I don't think we can.
Yeah, I just noticed there, we have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First.
Second.
Seven seventeen.